That is an option. It doesn't. It still concerns me, even getting people together outdoors. There is still going to be choke points unless we figure out how to check people in at some other date. People are going to have to use the restroom. People are going to want to congregate with one another. We have the logistics of taking the vote, of course, the New England weather. You know, there are all sorts of issues. One of the things that actually the, you know, our legislators are perhaps advocating is to just keep postponing the meeting and trying to have, you know, budgets done in short increments. And Mitch and I have talked about that and he knows, you know, far more detail than I, that that's a very difficult thing to do and to actually make take place. So that's not, you know, a wonderful option either. So things are sort of tentative right now. I know other communities are moving forward with outdoor meetings and people are pushing them back either, you know, to later in June than ours or to the end of June. And I, you know, I was a scientist before I was a lawyer and I'm, I'm taking this disease very seriously. And I am, I'm just filled with dread, the prospect of bringing people together for what could be a lengthy meeting, even if it's out on a field somewhere.
Any questions from the Board of Selectmen? Selectmen Donnelly?
Yeah, I, I think we should postpone the meeting, but I'd like to hear from Mitch, kind of what the implications are for the budget. But I too am very concerned about bringing people together. We have, you know, a lot of elderly people and, and it just logistically, it seems like it would be extremely risky to try to do this even outdoors. So what does it mean Mitch? If we have to postpone, what does it mean for the budget?
Sure. So the, if there's no budget passed by June 30th, we would go to a 1/12 budget. The state has a process where you submit approximately two weeks before the start of that month to them. They have a form you complete, basically take that month from the previous fiscal year, tell you you need to stick with that because that's the last town meeting approved version for that official time. They require quite a bit of backup for it. Certainly a tedious, difficult process. However, I think that's really, that's really where we are at this point. It's just not safe or appropriate to pull everybody into town meeting.
Is there?
Go ahead Denise, finish up.
Yeah, so, so Bob, you said you were, you were working with Ann, Margaret and Bruce to get some relief from the city and it sounds like it's not really, it's not really forthcoming.
It's, you know, I think that there are political discussions that are way above my pay grade that are going on with the, this particular, you know, act. And I've pointed out what I consider to be a, you know, sort of a logical inconsistency that I don't, I don't see why the safety standards for representative town meeting would be any different, for example, than in an open town meeting.
Right.
And, you know, I have beseeched both Representative Frante and Senator Tarter to try to get us some relief from that. But, but yes, I think I'm not tremendously optimistic. For whatever reason, this one is moving slowly. And I don't know if we will actually get anything and get, get the approval to have an open town meeting held in a virtual format. I'm convinced that it would, that there would not be any increased risk of voter fraud. It's not like the methods that we use presently are, you know, are foolproof. We just rely on the fact that we know everybody. But, you know, people can hand clickers to other people. People can raise their hands twice, went back when we did it, you know, the old fashioned way. There are other ways to get around that. And the methods that I saw, I would say are, are equally secure. And I think one of the things that people are worried about is that you could get somebody to just have big blocks of voters coming in that don't represent anybody. And I don't see the possibility of that. I think at worst, you know, one person sitting down at a computer monitor could hand the monitor off, you know, the keyboard off to somebody else who might vote. But, you know, the likelihood of that, I think, is rather slim. So I'm convinced that these things could be done appropriately, but we just have to have permission to do them.
Go ahead, finish your thought Denise.
Forgot what I was gonna say. Oh, well.
I've got a question if you don't mind.
Then I'll go.
Yep. Selectmen Campbell?
Yeah, so actually Mitch, if we did go to a 1/12 budget, what is, is there anything that, that by doing that, it would imperil as far as town projects or initiatives or funding or payroll? Or what is there, do we have any issues with anything like that?
So the 1/12 budget would basically not allow us to proceed with any kind of cost of living adjustments or contractual increases. We would have to hold those until there was a town meeting. And then when the town meeting happens, they'd be applied retroactively. But basically we exist with, you know, for, for example, July would exist exactly as it did July 2019. They basically certify, generally speaking, with some exceptions, exactly what you had then in categories and allow you to use that. Basically, it's meant to just keep you along. Projects, contracts, et cetera. We're still sorting out the contractual piece because typically July 1st, we enter into numerous long contracts with vendors. We're sorting out what that looks like. We would not be able to do that without a town meeting appropriation, but not insurmountable. Many of the vendors that we interact with on that level have been for many years. So it's not a, an issue of if, it's more of when we would do that for them.
And I think if I'm, if I'm not muted still, one of the other concerns is that I don't think that this situation is necessarily going away very quickly. So, you know, our spring meeting could then morph into a fall meeting and we could be in the very same place as we are now from a virus perspective. And that's why I'm really pushing to get some way for us to have a virtual safe meeting so that we can move the town forward and, you know, move a little bit, you know, get, get through things and be able to deal with some real, real big challenges that I think we're going to have both budgetarily and otherwise.
Would it be, oh, sorry Dawn, go ahead.
Just one quick follow-up Denise and then I'm all set. So from, without getting deep into obviously collective bargaining and things like that, would, are the unions, obviously, is this something that's done by, by, by the state and legislation? And how do the, do the unions have to sign off on this just so they know that, you know, you're not going to get it now, but it's going to come? How does that process work with them?
Sure. So the state is the one that approves the process. They approve the month by month. We would of course, you know, that conversation with all of the unions and all of the non-union staff ahead of time to let them know. And it does come down to, it would be retroactive. You know, the unfortunate piece with this particular town meeting is that we had some contracts that were on it ratified. So it'll be an even further retroactive piece for them. But, you know, we'll have those conversations with each of the unions and the non-union staff as we get closer to that.
Would the school operate on the 1/12 as well?
Yes, that would be part of the, the process. Yep.
Okay.
The town clerk has her hand up too.
I just, I think I noticed that Essex has one scheduled as outdoors. I'd like to see how that goes. I mean, that's similar, that's much smaller than us, but it'd be interesting to see how that one works out as an outdoor meeting. I'm concerned about a Zoom meeting for, for the people in Rockport that don't have access. You know, I've been going to town meeting all my life and a lot of old Rockport people go and a lot of those people do not have computer access and, and would be very intimidated or confused about it. I mean, a lot of people are very computer savvy, don't get me wrong. But I just would be concerned that there'd be a whole group of Rockport residents that wouldn't feel they could participate in a online meeting.
Okay.
The ones that are most at risk too.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Absolutely. Yep.
Pat Brown?
I'm just gonna throw this out there and I'm probably gonna get a bad reaction, but I don't know. Is, if we could, first of all, the best case scenario would be a remote meeting. I feel that, and Bob said we couldn't shorten the warrant. Is there, first of all, I'm gonna ask Bob, is there any way we could just do articles one through six and not do the other articles? Could we shorten the meeting to, to just do the budget articles?
Well, I mean, I, I actually think you, somebody could make a motion to postpone. It would have to be to a, a time certain, I believe.
Okay.
But I have to take a good hard look at the bylaws.
I, I question whether or not we could have the meeting not to, I don't expect too many people to go. And social distancing could probably have a check-in. However, we would have to have seating set up so that it's so many feet apart. I have a, because we have no quorum, I should think that if we held the meeting in a gymnasium with loudspeakers, I don't think we would fill it even if we had six feet around people. I understand it's not the best scenario, but it would get the budget taken care of. Which, and personally, the more the better. And that's why I say remote, but if you can't have remote, why can't we have the meeting?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Selectmen Wilkinson?
Yeah, so Bob, thanks for being, I just want to thank you for being so like deliberate and thoughtful about this. Because my opinion is, we are all like collectively as a group, working so hard to keep people safe and healthy that like I absolutely would not be in favor of anything that would put more people at risk. So in my opinion, we either wait it out or we try to find some, a remote thing that, my concern with the remote is similar to roofs, that if someone doesn't have an iPad or a computer, you know, has no technology and wants to participate, we have to get, you know, it's just access. It's not really security, it's more access. But, but I for one am just all in favor of either waiting, but like you said, we could be waiting a while or trying to figure something outside the box. But social, like we've seen what happens in other places and even under like the best circumstances, trying to social distance, it's not, it's not ideal. And in my opinion, it's like literally putting the, the highest risk people in town at risk.
Yep.
Selectmen Donnelly?
So, um, two things. One, could, would a letter from the Board of Selectmen to the governor be of any value in trying to implore him that, you know, he, he takes some action to, to make a remote meeting possible? My first question. My second question was, could we deploy the Chromebooks from the school for people who don't have access?
I was thinking the same thing. If we have all of these computers available, I mean, anyone who wants to attend would have a computer, computer access at the school, whereas everyone else would be at home. I think that if they were given the option that they could call in ahead of time and the meeting would be set up on a computer and they would be in an isolated area by themselves and could still vote, I think that would be more than fair. It would probably be more comfortable in that respect than sitting in the folding chairs at regular town meetings for the elderly.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. Mr. Lebo?
This is a brilliant suggestion, but remember you could do multiple venues on school property. So you could, that are big spaces, you'd have, let's say, elementary cafeteria, elementary gym, high school gym, high school auditorium, high school cafeteria. That could be set up and eaten properly distanced, especially if you, this gets a little more bizarre. If you sort of knew who was coming and always, so you had an idea of what the crowd would be, then you could, you know, maybe structure it so that you could handle that or at least you could, you know, get an anticipation of that. Not that somebody should make, you know, have to make a reservation to come vote at town meeting, but those are pretty big spaces that could be set up and properly social distance, including having lots of different bathroom spaces that could be used and could be cleaned. We could have, you know, custodians come back on the first of July and they could all be in force, on duty to make sure those are cleaned every half hour or more than that, which is part of the CDC recommendations. And I'm sure our tech guys could pipe in, you know, the, the sound from the moderator and discussion could be held from those remote places. It'd be all on that one property and that would make it possibly doable. Just an idea. I mean, we certainly would consider that.
Actually, we, we've been talking about that for a little while and there, there are the smart boards in almost every classroom.
Yeah.
Small groups of people in, in a lot of classrooms. And I don't know if you would need a moderator for each room, but you, you know, you could certainly.
I think you could deputize moderators possibly Bob. And there's a, all the classrooms in all the buildings have phone access. So if they could be figured out how they got to a switchboard type thing, somebody could go up, pick the phone up, be put in a hopper, you know, like they were waiting to, you know, get a call and that phone system's all digital. I think you probably could, you know, open up classrooms too, so that people could be well spread apart in that complex. You can put a lot of people there, more than what I've seen at the town meeting. The controversial items, at least from the school, the overrides off the table. So that's not there. You're talking about a traditional budget request, maybe controversial, but at least the override part is there, which would have attracted a different audience than normal. And if you could take Pat's suggestion about, you know, maybe tailoring it down to the budget articles and being able to postpone to a date certain for the others, that maybe you then could postpone that. I think you could pull it off and, and be able to do that. I personally think that's better than virtual and people sitting home on computers and voting on phones and all that kind of stuff.
You could almost do some sort of combination of, because there's not much difference between that and the virtual meeting. So you.
Hubbard situation and.
Yeah, you have people come to the school in, in groups of two Z's and three Z's and sit in different rooms.
Yep.
I mean, those, these things are all possible and, and I like, you know, I like the creativity of all of them. It doesn't change the ultimate equation in my mind though, that, you know, I've lost a lot of clients during this time and, you know, anytime, the whole goal of distancing is to keep people apart and now to keep them outside. And so anytime we do anything that brings them inside for a period of time or together for a period of time, it just, it just makes me uncomfortable. So I'm gonna work as hard as I can to come up with a different way.
Great.
Selectmen George?
I mentioned the schools last time. I thought that was a good idea and thanks for offering that up Rob. And also I think that another thing I've heard has been done is when you do an area like that, there's someone who takes your name and telephone number. So every room, everyone in room, the science room would, maybe there were four people in that room. You would write down their name and telephone number and you would keep it so that anyone, if anyone got sick in that room, from that room, you knew who their contacts were.
Nice. Doesn't that scare, doesn't that feel like setting people up for like, like I wouldn't want to be in any room?
No, but that's just a precautionary measure to make sure that we're doing things safely.
Yeah.
If we do something like that.
Maybe in like phase three or something. I'm just like, I don't know, I feel like we're still so like in the.
I think we're early. I don't think we need to do it now.
Yeah. It's like we're just so like still in the middle of it.
Yeah. There's nothing about the science of this that makes me feel uncomfortable bringing people together.
Okay. Selectmen Donnelly?
Yeah, I am violently opposed to, to doing that. People are gonna, they're gonna be close to each other, no matter what you do in that scenario. And it really, really concerns me. I'd like to propose that the Board of Selectmen write a letter to the governor and try to light a fire. You know, for what it's worth, at least we can try to do something.
Maybe, maybe, I'm sorry.
Yeah. A remote meeting that is on cable TV so people can watch it while it's happening. We set up some method like Bob outlined where they can call in to vote and keep people safe.
Maybe the moderator could answer this, but I believe that the bill would, if it turns out to be a bill, I'm not exactly sure how something like that would be enacted, would go through either the House or the Senate. So I don't know if Bruce or Ann would be a more appropriate jumping off point to something like that.
Maybe all three of them.
Or all of them.
All of them, because it'd have to be a governor's bill at this point. Have to be.
And I need to, I, I apologize, I have a five o'clock work meeting that I need to go to. But I think we, I think we can't get to finality, certainly not now on this, but I'll continue to work on it and to keep Mr. Chairman and Mr. Town Administrator informed of my progress or lack thereof.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Pat and I have been having multiple discussions about this as well.
Great. Thank you. Dr. Wedmore?
Yeah, I wonder if the solution from this is gonna have to come from the school committee. And, uh, Dr. Lebo, come September, the town will be presented with, how are you gonna get, what is it, 300, 400 kids on school grounds communicating with them? And however you work that out is the same template you can use for 150 people for a quorum for town meeting. But you can, we can try to change the ground rules with the governor and the rules. But it really comes down to, how is the school gonna solve this? And can we use that patent or else there's gonna be no school this fall? And if you can take and pass 1/12 of a budget, you can pass 1/12 of a budget times three. And now you're at September and the school has a plan that you can use for town meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great. All right. More discussion to follow, I'm sure.
Well, just a question, do we need to postpone the meeting?
Not at this point. You haven't issued a warrant.
Okay.
Issue a warrant. There isn't one. So, you know, we'll probably take another, have another discussion next week just to continue nudging things down the road a little bit. But until you issue the warrant, it's, it's not official.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, let's continue on with our agenda. Letter H, Living Facilities Updates. What do, what are we hearing and how are things going at Milver Park and Rockport High School Apartments and Denmark and places along those lines?
Well, I can start off.
Yes.
I've touched base, I've touched base with most of them. I touched base with Milver Park today and Lee Perry Duda. They're doing well. She has no confirmed cases of, or heard of anyone being sick. She said they have gotten a large package of masks that they've been delivering from FEMA for all their residents. And they got some surprise $25 gift cards for each resident from the Council on Aging, which was very nice for each of them to use over at Walgreens around the corner. So they were very happy with that. I talked to Dawn over at Pigeon Cove Ledges and Rockport High School Apartments. They're doing well. They have had no patients symptomatic or positives. And they're just staying, you know, restricted and doing well. These, there's a new manager over at Old Farm in Support of Living who touched base with me today. They still have one of their residents positive, that has been positive. He had a repeat test and was still positive. So they're using their PPE and isolation with him. All the staff has been tested and they're negative. So they're holding their own over there and doing well. They have three other residents that have been negative. And I told them every week I'll check and they've got my number. They'll call me if needed, but they're all doing very well.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, Chacey Robinson, our public health nurse and Dr. Newman are Denmark primary contacts. They're both on the.
Do either one of those individuals have any comment?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Ron, do you want to go first? I don't know.
No, why don't I let you go first? I have very little say.
Okay. I was just going to say that the results of the nursing facilities clinical audits were published. And these audits were part of the Commonwealth's COVID-19 Nursing Facility Accountability and Support Program. So facilities with a score of 24 to 28 were deemed inadherence. Regardless of the score however, if a facility did not meet the criteria in one particular core competency, the facility was deemed not inadherence. Denmark had a score of 26, but was deemed not inadherence due to an issue in one of those core competency areas. And facilities in this grouping, and there were many throughout the state of Massachusetts, will receive targeted infection control training and a re-audit on May 29th. That's in three days. And I do not know what core competency the issue was in with, with Denmark.
Okay. Dr. Newman?
Yeah, all I have to say is that I thought that it would be useful to have a direct connection with the Department of Public Health. I'm interested especially in hearing what's happening from a medical point of view there. So I have a call and I haven't yet spoken to the Director of Clinical Quality Improvement at DPH, the name that Chacey gave me. So hopefully at a, an upcoming meeting, I'll be able to fill people in on what's, what's happening from the DPH's perspective.
Okay. Great. Thank you both. Um, let's head on to our next agenda item, Mental Health Resources. We talked about this last meeting. Any update regarding the resources available?
Well, I, I actually heard just, just driving before the meeting that there's a new, I believe, a new mental health or a new grief slash mental health hotline that the state has opened up. So I'll get that phone number and get it to Mitch so we can get it added to the website.
Perfect. Anyone else on mental health? Okay. Thank you. Letter J is Town Administrators Incident Command Updates. Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've already touched on some of the weekend work that the staff have done. So we've covered that area. Additionally, we are in the process now of slowly uploading all of the recorded Zoom meetings to a single webpage. We've gotten a request for that. It's a slow process, but we're in the process of doing that. So on the COVID Updates page, we have a recorded Zoom meeting that was activated today by IT. And we're in the process of, we're in the process of starting tomorrow, slowly copying and pasting those links over and then we'll sort out getting some of the ones that are recorded on a hard, uploaded there as well. So got some requests and people who are curious about it. So we'll, we'll get all that on there so that it's easily accessible for folks over the next week or so. Reopening info, I'll defer to Select, Selectmen Wilkinson when we get to, to that section. I've also had some outreach regarding some issues relating to the Atlantic Path, Phillips Ave and some concerns relating to that. I've been evaluating the situation. I've had contact with folks on that. The matter now is with Town Council. Our land use and zoning attorney is reviewing that matter. And we'll take some determinations once they get back, once they get back to me with some complaints frankly. So we are aware of the situation and we're reviewing what our legal options and options, options in general are to address that issue. So that's, that's the extent I can say on that. So that's, that's the extent I can say on that one. I know that's probably very vague for someone maybe listening, but we're trying to sort out some complex issues relating to that. Uh, to that particular occasion. So, uh, hopefully more to come on that, uh, down the road a little bit.
Great. That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, thank you Mitch.
Um, Can I ask a quick question of Mitch?
Sure, of course.
Um, I'm just curious, when we have these Zoom calls, how many participants can you have?
So we can have, um, at least 100. Um, for a larger meeting, the schools have a 500 person account?
We have 54. Presently.
No, I was just thinking about if we had to do it for town meeting in a Zoom town meeting, like would there be space in one meeting for everybody or would you have to?
We could do if, um, through the partner of the schools and, and the account that the superintendent manages. We could do a 500 person meeting on Zoom.
But then again, you have people that don't have access to computers and you, you know, so we get that in consideration.
I mean, Zoom people can use a regular telephone as well. That's the one, the one good thing about Zoom as opposed to, um, other platforms is it does have a telephone, does have, I mean, there are several people on the call right now today that are on phones.
Right.
But Just curious, thanks. Yeah, um, I, can I just, I just wanted to mention, ask Mitch one other thing. Mitch, I know that there was some talk online. It might be helpful for people to know that, um, not all committees only, um, not all committees are meeting via Zoom. And that, so I know people were wondering when right of way. I think that they said that they were gonna start meeting again soon, but basically only committees at first that were dealing with legal timely issues or, um, or COVID were meeting, right?
Yes, we're, we're still trying to keep it to, um, a minimized level of meetings as it is for some. Um, you know, there are internet connectivity issues, there are phone issues. Um, so for the time being, we are keeping it very minimal and only committees that are meeting are um, keeping it to the extent possible, uh, you know, unless it only matters that are timely, um, or urgent.
Yeah.
We're still focusing on that with the, certainly of health and selectmen.
Right.
Great. Okay, um, let's go on to, uh, Board of Selectmen and/or Board of Health Updates. Anything from the Board of Health?
Not the last $48.
Okay.
Uh, yes, I've got a couple of quick updates. Um, just a couple other, I think, important issues that came up at, uh, the state health department call. Um, there is some concern about dealing with the face covering issue uh, inside a, uh, a retail situation. If a person says, um, they have a medical condition. Um, and if the, uh, retail establishment is concerned um, that there is a direct threat, there is a conflict in the law between ADA accommodation and the ability of a store owner or store manager, um, from, and, uh, for asking, uh, the potential patron to leave. So it's an unresolved legal issue. DPH is suggesting that the retail establishment try to service the customer, um, outside of the store if that's possible. It's certainly not possible in barber shops and, and situations like that, but it turns out that this is a potential emerging issue. Um, another, uh, point that I thought was important. As of July 1st, there's, for offices, there's the 25% occupancy rule. And that rule is, um, actually overruled by, can be overruled by municipalities in manning public health and public safety and, um, town hall offices. If in point of fact, um, those public safety or public health services are providing critical services to the municipality. So the 25% occupancy rule in a particular office, uh, can be waived in those cases. Um, I thought that was important to know. Um, the other update I have is, uh, with, uh, Chassie, um, and a student intern. We're working on a, a much more detailed report, uh, around the status of, uh, COVID. Um, in Rockport. And on our, in our Thursday joint meeting, we will have a, probably a PowerPoint, um, presentation, uh, looking at trends in cases, hospitalizations, contacts, uh, long-term care, uh, and, um, some basic information on mortality. And that'll be happening on Thursday. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else on the Board of Health or Board of Selectmen regarding any updates?
Yeah, should I do the reopening committee now?
Perfect, yes, please.
So on the, the reopening committee has, we've met twice and we're meeting again tomorrow. Um, new added to the website over the weekend is a document. Um, Mitch, it's on the, if you go to the homepage, what's the easiest way to find it?
Sure, so it's on the homepage under the news and announcements, um, information, uh, regarding Rockport businesses reopening.
Yep, is a document that we created, um, to help kind of guide any Rockport business kind of through the reopening process. And it's, it's basically links to the state guidelines as well as the town, um, policy that we added last week, which is that they just have to submit their, their state plan to the town. And I believe we've already received, um, plans that people have submitted. So it's on the website. I'll do some pushing out of it over social media and, um, businesses are being emailed the link to the, to the place on the website as well. Uh, via several channels through the town. And we are, uh, working on, we've started a document called a Know Before You Go, which is kind of a know what's open and what's not in town. And, you know, the current regulations. Um, we were hoping to have that, um, done by this past weekend, but it, it, it's gonna be for, it, it will be up in time for this weekend and I will, um, I should be able to actually, um, it should be up, yeah, it will be up by Thursday or Friday at the latest. So we're working on that document and both of those documents can be updated as we, um, enter different phases and as regulations and guidelines change. But hope those are, um, helpful to businesses and then, um, and visitors alike. Anything else Mitch from that? I don't think Barb is here. Okay.
Nope, that's it.
Good. Uh, anything else from anyone? Okay, uh, let's head on to, uh, Health Agent and Health Nurse, Nurse Update, Nurses Updates. Do we have anything there?
Let me just unmute Chassie. Okay.
I don't have too much to add, really Denmark and the, the data intern were my update, so I'm all set.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, the Health Agent, um, is as well.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I don't have much of an update, just to say that I am staying very busy with septic work. Housing complaints and other nuisance complaints.
Okay.
Leslie, are we gonna have a chance to review some of those at our Thursday meeting?
Yes, at the Thursday meeting, we will have a septic plan with wetland variances and also the septic installer complaint that I brought to your attention a week or so ago. That will be also on Thursday.
Great. Thank you, Leslie. All right, well, let's go to the last part of our agenda this afternoon is public comment. Uh, Mitch will call on people. We asked that, uh, you name, uh, your address and direct all comments to the chairperson. Pitch, go right ahead.
Thank you. Please use the hand raise function if you wish to speak. First up, we have Charlie Seavey. Please provide your address.
Charlie Seavey, 18 Frank Street. Uh, as Chairman Murphy knows, the League of Women Voters is running a debate, uh, for the candidates running this fall. And we're doing a test Friday night before the actual debate on Sunday night. Now, we've had a lot of discussion about the possibility of a town meeting in a virtual setting. Which is gonna be large, it's gonna be complicated, and if we're gonna try this, I urge you to do a large scale test with at least 150 people to make sure the technology is gonna work. Phone lines don't have the same carrying capacity that fiber optic cable does. Um, any number of things can go wrong. There are, as, as Ruth George pointed out, a number of people even my age, who aren't really technologically with it. It, it could turn into a technological horror show if we don't do a large scale test and make sure that the thing is gonna work before we try having a virtual town meeting. The fact that Zoom actually has a 500 channel, uh, possibility mentioned by Dr. Lebo, that's really encouraging. It means that through that we can do larger scale ones than, than what we're using here. But for goodness sakes, let's test the thing before we try and do a real live one.
Thank you, Charlie.
Mr. Chair, up next we have Crystal Levill. Crystal, you're, please, you're now unmuted.
Hi, thank you. Um, I just did a few things. One is, while I was out on the property this weekend, we had friends kind of walk by who live in a few towns over. And they were surprised that everyone was in masks. And they asked a question about it. And one of the things they said is it said in coming into town, like you must wear a mask. But it wasn't specified that our policy is different than the governors in the downtown district in any signage coming into town. So they felt like they weren't compliant, but they weren't aware of it just coming into town. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I don't know if I mean, I know it's hard, but I wasn't sure if that was an easy sign fix. And then the other thing I just wanted to touch base on is um, I think I can agree with other people. I don't think the neck was overly busy this weekend. I think people were adhering to social distancing. Um, the only question I have is if anyone went on the end of the neck this weekend, the parking spots that were blocked, people aren't congregating in them. So, you know, I question if we should block off parking spots for residents and for, um, you know, visitors of the town if they're not actually being used for social distancing. People were up at the end, people were on the breakwater, but no one was just standing in a parking spot. So, you know, I question if it, if it's the best use of space as the town slowly sees more visitors. And even tonight, there's actually some cars up there that I think are visitors. Like parked in between like police signs. I just think it, there's police signs like every other spot, like don't park here. Um, so I just question if it's the best use of that space and then also, you know, how well it's blocked off.
Okay, thank you, Crystal.
Okay, Kate?
Kate's waving to us.
Full name and address, please.
Kate Cahill, 3 I still haven't figured out how to find that.
But you're doing works just fine.
It's fine.
I'm happy. Um, so thank you for opening the public restrooms. There was some confusion on Friday. Um, a lot of the, uh, restaurants and ice cream stores down on Bear Skin Neck were sending everybody to T-Warf. And they were not open on Friday, unfortunately. So there was, um, definitely some confusion there. A couple of people I talked to said, oh, we've been sending people there all day. And I was like, yeah, you have. So there was some issues in my backyard, but, um, we're happy now. It's been taken care of and the weekend trash pickup situation is much better. Thank you very much. So, I'm happy on both of those counts.
Great, thank you, Kate.
Okay, anybody else who wishes to speak, please use the hand raise function or, uh, raise your hand so we can see you. Okay, I don't see any of the hands. I'm gonna go to the phones, Mr. Chair, hold on.
Thank you.
Okay, those are on the phone or unmuted. If you wish to, uh, speak, say so now, please. Okay, no takers, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Uh, appears to be it.
Thank you, Mitch. Anything else from either board before we adjourn? Hearing none, uh, I'd like to call, we're gonna adjourn the meeting, roll call, vote. Uh, Dr. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Wedmore?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Selectmen Wilkinson?
Yes.
Selectmen Campbell?
Aye.
Selectmen Donnelly?
I move that we adjourn and aye.
Beautiful. Selectmen George?
I second it, aye.
You guys are very wordy today. And Selectmen Murphy votes aye. Thank you very much, everyone. Our next meeting will be at 6:00 PM on this coming Thursday. Again, a joint meeting with the Board of Health and the Rockport Board of Selectmen. Thank you, everyone.